This is the Wednesday, October 20th, 2021 meeting of Franklin Township Planning Board, regular meeting. Franklin Township is operating under a declaration of state and local emergency due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. It has been determined that the public's attendance at meetings of the planning board poses a risk to their health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, this meeting has been relocated from the council chambers at the Franklin Township Municipal Building to a virtual meeting format, and is being conducted utilizing virtual remote telecommunications equipment in conformance with the directives of the state of New Jersey. The relocation of this virtual meeting of the planning board was posted in the township's official newspaper, The Courier-News. On the township website within the municipal building, this notice detailed the following means of public participation in this remote meeting, either by link to the virtual meeting via WebEx or a call-in number for those without internet access. Public inspection of application materials is made available via the township website and at work in the Planning Zoning Department wing in the municipal building. Formal action may be taken at this virtual meeting. As I remind you, board members, please mute yourselves unless you wish to speak or to provide a vote. Please withhold questions until all the applicants' witnesses have finished presenting, at which time the chair will ask the board for comment. Instructions for public input, and I like Mark's updated instructions, including the chat function, so I'm going to read from that. For those members of the public that are watching via WebEx who wish to speak, there are two options. You can press the raise hand button. To do this, click on the participants icon in the lower right corner of your screen, which will open a new participants window on the right side of your screen. In the lower right-hand corner of that window will be a hand icon. Click on that hand icon, which will place a small hand symbol next to your name in the participant list. Or you can use the chat function, either use the default, which is everyone, or chat to Mark Healy. Do not chat to Christine Wers, would vary as she is unable to review messages during the meeting, and do not use the Q and A function, as that section will not be monitored during the meeting. For those members of the public that are listening via the call-in number who wish to speak, please press star three. At the appropriate time in the meeting, township staff will announce your name, unmute you, and you'll have the opportunity to provide comment. Please provide your name and address. If providing a statement, the board attorney will swear to you in. After speaking, if you're on the WebEx, please press the lower hand button, so we know you don't want to speak again. If calling in, please press star three again. Okay. So with that, we'll be in favor of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Chase?
Here.
Carl Houck?
Here.
Mahir Rafiq?
Here.
Carol Schmidt?
Here.
Jennifer Ragnow?
She's one of the attendees.
Yes, she is.
She's here.
I'm here. Hello, everyone.
Thank you.
Mustafa Mansray?
Yeah.
Charles Brown?
Here.
Bob Thomas asked to be excused. Sammy Shabon? He might be showing up a little late, you said. And Chairman Ressini?
Present.
Okay.
Right, so you will have received the two sets of minutes in your virtual packet.
If anybody wasn't aware, the only person who cannot vote on the 9:1 minutes is Sammy. And 9:20, I know I sent him out late, so that's why I'm just letting you all know if you didn't get a chance to see them. And 9:22, the people who cannot vote is Jennifer, Mustafa, Charles, and Sammy.
Okay, thanks, Christine. So we'll go and do the September 1st, 2021 meeting minutes first, so if I can have a motion to approve those.
I'll make the motion.
Second in.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Houck?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Carol Schmidt? Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Mustafa Mansray?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
And Chairman Ressini?
Yes.
Moving next to the September 22nd, 2021 minutes, I'll entertain a motion for those.
I'll make the motion.
Second in.
Okay, I would just like to make mention that Sammy Shabon is here as of 7:36 this evening. Okay, Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Houck?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Carol Schmidt?
Yes.
And Chairman Ressini?
Yes. So let's see, we have new resolutions, new discussion items. We can move to public comments, and this would probably be a good time for me to just mention that we have one hearing tonight, 31 Voorhees LLC. If you are here for that hearing, this will have a separate public hearing of its own during the time to hear that application. So that would be the time to comment on that. The opening to the public that we'll make now is for general planning comments unrelated to that application. So with that preamble, I'll make a motion to open to the public. Can I get a second to that?
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Bye.
Bye. Meeting is open to the public for any general planning comments, and I'll... But Mark, let me know if there's anyone who wishes to speak.
Just again, to remind the public to use the raised hand function. It looks like everybody is on my back, so we don't have any call-ins. So I'm not seeing anybody, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, with that, I'll make a motion to close the public portion.
Second in.
All in favor?
All right.
Bye.
Okay, we'll move on to our hearing, 31 Voorhees LLC, PLN 20-00013.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is an application for site plan approval on four different parcels by 31 Voorhees LLC, which is making the application on behalf of RPM Development Group, which is the designated redevelopment in the township's Renaissance redevelopment area. The application involves the construction of 37 units on the four parcels. The reason that the parcels are not contiguous and part of one total application is because RPM has been attempting to acquire all of the land within that redevelopment area to develop that section of the project. However, because some of the property owners are not inclined to sell their properties, and generally, it's been the philosophy of the township to not condemn properties, we are going to be doing these sections piecemeal as we acquire the parcels. We also do have an overall plan, which we will share to the board, which is conceptual, but will show how all of these parcels tie together within that section. Tonight, I have two witnesses that I intend to call. My site engineer, Mr. Shelley, and also our architect, Mr. Boozess. I also have Richard Martoglio available from RPM in the event that we need to have any questions answered by him. Mr. Chairman, I assume, as we have done recently, I will present my two witnesses, and then we will do all the questioning at the end. Is that how we'll handle this?
That sounds good, Peter.
Okay, if we can have Mr. Shelley sworn in, and then also share the screen with him, so he can go through his exhibits.
Mr. Shelley, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
Kevin Shelley, S-H-E-L-L-Y, with Shorepoint Engineering. Address is 1985 Highway 34, Suite A7 in Wall, New Jersey.
Kevin, you're a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Correct.
And how long have you been so licensed?
Since 2012.
And can you briefly give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background?
Sure, I have a license, I have a degree in mechanical engineering from the College of New Jersey. I am a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey since 2012. I have testified in front of various boards across the state, most recently Montgomery Township, Sayerville, and Old Bridge, but I have not previously testified in front of this board.
Peter, Kevin's accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Shelley, the plans that are before the board this evening were prepared by you, is that correct?
Correct.
And this particular part of the project, I note your plans, initial plans, were dated almost over a year ago, is that correct?
Correct.
And during this past year, there have been, as a result of meetings with the township, numerous modifications, revisions, and iterations of the plan, is that correct?
Correct.
And as a matter of fact, as a result of the most recent staff report, there is one more revision that we have submitted, and we will be discussing this evening in one of the sections, correct?
Correct.
All right, can you briefly give the board an overview of what we are doing, and then we'll go to the site specifics?
Sure, I'm going to share my screen, if that's all right. The first, everybody can see that. What I'm showing is Sheet 2 from the site plan set out was submitted, and this just gives a brief overview of each of the four parcels that were mentioned, that are kind of scattered through various blocks within the redevelopment area. And the applicant's requesting preliminary final site plan approval to construct 37 townhome units within eight buildings across these sites. The first of the properties where I'm pointing to now is located at Block 113. It's comprised of lots 1 through 5 and 11 through 27, which is a 1.03 acre parcel, which is bound by Blair Avenue to the north, Gurley Street to the east, Voorhees Street to the south, and Berry Street to the west. Block 119 is comprised of lots 26 through 46, and it's a 1.02 acre property, bound by Blair Avenue to the north, Gurley Street to the west, Voorhees Avenue to the south. And then right up the corner from where Blair and Fuller Street meet, we have Block 122, lots 3 through 6, which is a .23 acre property with frontage on Fuller Street. It's about halfway between Camner Avenue and Booker Street. And then finally, we have Block 132, lots 9 through 14, which is a .34 acre property with frontage on Davis Avenue, which is halfway between Fuller Street and Frank Street. That just gives you kind of an overview of where each of these properties are in relation to the immediate areas.
All right, can you now focus on, let's start with Block 113, and indicate to the board what we are proposing there, and review the site plan with the board?
Sure. I'll switch to the overall rendering for Block 113 and 19 that was submitted. And here...
Before we go further, that was not part of the original submission, so we should have that marked as an exhibit as A1, Mr. Vignolo?
That'd be great, Mr. Lanford, thank you.
Okay. Shelley.
All right, so located right down the middle here is Gurley Street. So to the left of that is Block 113. And here, the applicant proposes to construct 17 townhouse units within four buildings on the site. Each building is located along the perimeter with street frontage. Each unit will have one garage space in the back, and one, or either one or two driveway spaces, depending on the unit widths. There's a total of 26 driveway spaces and 17 garage spaces for the site. And again, they are all located back behind the buildings. Access to the parking area comes from Voorhees Avenue and from Blair Avenue. And two site identification signs are proposed at each entrance. The signs will be a maximum of 36 inches tall, and they'll be pushed back to be five feet from the front property line and out of any site triangle easements for the driveways. The five-foot front yard setback for the signs will eliminate the variances outlined in the board professionals' letters. Trash collection is handled with a centralized trash enclosure that's located within the site. Existing water and sewer mains in the perimeter streets will provide new service to each of the new buildings. The proposed stormwater management system for the property consists of various catch basins throughout the parking areas and an underground detention basin beneath the asphalt. And manufactured treatment devices used to provide the required water quality treatment for the development as well. Both building and pole-mounted LED light fixtures are provided throughout the site, along with attractive landscape package. And a 3,000, I'm going to zoom in here up against Gurley Street. A 3,000-square-foot open space area is proposed in between Building A and Gurley Street in this area. It'll feature various types of landscaping and a path, as well as two locations with benches for the community to enjoy. The applicant's proposing the full reconstruction of Gurley Street, which will create a 30-foot-wide roadway with on-street parking, curbs, and sidewalks, whereas the road is probably about 20 feet wide as it is right now. A total of 12 on-street parking spaces will be provided in this location. The applicant is also proposing to mill and repave their half of Voorhees Avenue and Blair Avenue along the property frontage. In the August 17th CME review letter, it was requested that the applicant revise the perimeter street designs to allow for additional on-street parking. And this effort would result in a significant additional site work, including new curbing, sidewalks, pavement striping, underground utility relocations, utility pole relocations, and additional site paving. And the applicant will agree to make the requested street improvements with the condition that municipal funding is available to assist with the construction costs. And in total, eight on-street spaces are provided along Blair Avenue, six spaces along Berry Street, and six spaces along Voorhees Avenue as well. The requested widening of Berry Street does have an impact on the proposed site design that's different than what is in the site plans. By pushing the Berry Street curb and sidewalk back by about six feet from where it is right now, Buildings C and D located at the bottom of the plan here will also need to get shifted back as well, so that the buildings have enough separation from those new sidewalks. Doing so results in Building D, which is this small two-unit building fronting on Voorhees Avenue, having a side yard setback at five feet now, whereas 10 feet is required. So a variance would be required in this scenario. And again, this variance is only necessary due to the requested road widening for Berry Street. Variance is also being requested for building height, where 40 feet is the maximum height allowed, and 40.6 feet is proposed. The main roof lines comply with the 40-foot height limitation, but there are several architectural peaks that slightly exceed it to provide usable living space in the upper-floor areas. And we believe this variance request is de minimis. Otherwise, the proposed improvements for Block 113 comply with the bulk standards of the redevelopment plan, and if approved, the lots will be consolidated into a single parcel.
Thank you, Kevin. Can we move on then to the adjacent parcel right across the street, and review with the board what we're proposing on that site?
Sure, very similar to Block 113. In Block 119 here, we have 10 townhouse units within two buildings on the site. Again, each one is located along a perimeter street. Parking is located in the back of the buildings with access coming from Voorhees Avenue. Each unit has a garage space and either one or two driveway spaces back behind a unit, depending on the width. Similarly, water and sewer provided from the adjacent roads. Underground stormwater management system is proposed under the roadways. And we have building and pole-mounted LED light fixtures and landscaping throughout as well. Again, there is a centralized trash enclosure area located on the site for the residents as well. Again, with the road widening, we create additional on-street parking spaces on Voorhees Avenue. There's four spaces there, as well as an additional four spaces on Blair Avenue, too. Approximately 8,500 square feet of this site in the eastern corner, up here located at the intersection where Blair and Fuller Street meet, is Wetlands. And the buffer adjacent to the Wetlands results in approximately 35% of this site being preserved as open space. Variance for this lot is requested, again, for the 40-foot building height, where 40.6 feet is requested and 40 feet is the maximum allowed. Otherwise, the proposed improvements on this lot comply with the bulk standards for the redevelopment plan. And again, the lots will be consolidated into a single parcel if approved.
Thank you, Kevin. Can we now move to, I guess the next one further up would be on Block 122? And this exhibit also was prepared after the submission, and should be marked as A2?
So Block 122 proposes four townhouse units within one building on this site. Each unit has one garage and one driveway space. This particular building type is different than the others, as the garages and parking are located in the front as individual driveways off of Fuller Street. This was done, and again, we can flip ahead to a concept plan for the full build-out of this block, but there's no other way to get access and parking back behind these buildings without owning additional parcels, which the applicant does not own at this time. Again, the site will have LED lights, landscaping, foundation plantings. Water and sewer will be provided out in Fuller Street. The stormwater management system for the property consists of trench drains at the end of the driveways to collect the runoff, porous pavement, asphalt driveways, and then an underground stormwater management basin located underneath the driveways as well.
And are there any variances associated with this parcel, other than, again, the six inches of height for the buildings?
No, just the building height. Everything else complies with bulk standards. And again, we will consolidate all these parcels into a single parcel.
Okay, and also, this site refuse will be treated differently from the other two that we talked about earlier?
Correct. These trash and recycling will be stored internally inside of each unit and brought out to the curb for scheduled pickups.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to parcel number four.
Parcel number four is Block 132, lots 9 through 14. This consists of six townhouse units.
Can we have that marked as A3, please? Go ahead.
Site consists of six townhouse units within one building. Each unit has a garage space, and these will have two, each unit will have two driveway spaces located back behind the building. Access to the property comes from Davis Street with a one-way entrance drive aisle located to the north of the building and a one-way exit to the south. Again, trash and recycle will be stored internally and brought out for scheduled pickups. There is a proposed stormwater management system located in the rear of the property, underground detention basin, manufactured treatment device to treat for water quality, and water and sewer will be provided out from the street as well. Same variance for building height here for the six-inch or the seven-inch exceedance, again, due to the roof peaks. But this particular parcel also has a variance for maximum impervious coverage. 89.4% is proposed, whereas 80% is the maximum allowed. And this is due to previous iterations had this building, again, similar to the building on Fuller Street with front-loaded garages and driveways, which did not result in an impervious coverage variance. But as we've discussed over many months, we've been going back and forth with the township about what a full build-out of this property would look like and the desire to preserve as much on-street parking as possible. It was the town's preference to have parking back behind the buildings, and in this case, adding the drive aisles to the north and south of the building, as you can see in the plan, takes up a good amount of otherwise pervious area or landscaped area, which puts it over the impervious coverage limit. And I do, while we're on the topic, I can switch to talking about the full build for this block. We can mark this as Exhibit A4, I believe?
Correct.
Now, the left of the screen shows what the current proposal is for this whole block, which is bound by Franklin Boulevard, Frank Street, Davis Avenue, and Fuller Street. And right now, we're proposing the single building with the parking back behind it. Now, in the event that additional parcels are able to be acquired, a straight throughway will be constructed between Fuller Street and Frank Street, parallel with both Franklin and Davis, to create rear parking scenarios for each of the units in this block. So the units will be fronting on Franklin and in Davis with all parking back behind it. This will allow for maximum on-street parking around the perimeter streets without having any driveways or accessways coming off of Franklin Boulevard.
And Kevin, when we accomplish that, the driveways that we are constructing, which are the basis for the variance, will they in fact be eliminated at that time?
Yes, as you can see on the middle, on the right side of Davis, this is the building that we're talking about, asking for approvals now. And in a full build-out scenario, the asphalt on either side of the building is removed, replaced with open lawn area, thus eliminating the variance in the future.
So that the variance, in essence, is temporary in nature until we can acquire the additional parcels and accomplish the full build-out of that street?
Correct.
Okay. With respect to the other parcels that we are approving tonight, do you have full conceptual build-outs for those?
Sure, we will mark this one as a five. This is a conceptual build-out for Block 122. On the left is the proposed four-unit building fronting on Fuller Street. And in this scenario, you have two smaller parcels located on either side at the corner of Camner and then the corner of Booker. And in these scenarios, we are proposed, you know, two unit buildings on either side, again, with driveways and front garages facing out on Fuller Street. And then trying to follow the nature and the concepts and the... And then trying to follow the, you know, the nature and the concepts in the redevelopment plan as best as we can. We created another area for the for the further parcels. Blocks or lots nine through fourteen and twenty-three through twenty-eight, which creates a throughway with parking and two additional apartments. Located in the remainder of that block.
And finally, the the first two parcels that we talked about obviously have covered the entire block. And they're self-contained. There's no future build out for those, is there?
With the exception for block one thirteen, lots six through ten are not currently part of the application. As you can see, there's carve-out with an existing single-family home. That during a full build-out scenario, we would simply extend the drive aisle. That's that's being constructed as part of this phase down, construct another force, four-unit building fronting on Gurley Street. We would continue that triangular shaped open space area up along Gurley Street. And in this full build-out scenario, as you can see here, which is building D. That we'd be asking for the side yard setback variance right now due to the Berry Street widening. In the full build-out scenario, that variance goes away as all the lots would be consolidated and the site works together nicely.
That's yeah. That's that's correct, Mr. Vignolo.
Thanks.
Now. You've had an opportunity to review all of the staff reports that were generated in conjunction with this application. Specifically, the report of Mr. Healy. Which is a second report dated August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Which comments on the plans that were before the board this evening. We then had a CME report dated August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. We had a report from the police. And. The health department had no objection. And the environmental commission report. Let's let's talk about Mr. Healy's report. There are some architectural comments in that report, which we will deal with with our architect. But with respect to all of the other comments involving the site plan. Item number one in the report. Reflects Mr. Healy's concern that we create more on-street parking. The plans that are before the board this evening have addressed those issues, have they not?
Correct.
Okay. And. Can you talk about the parking requirements under RSIS with respect to item number two in his report? Whether we meet RSIS standards and also what we've, what we've really done by doing this road widening and providing all the additional parking for. Both the residents of this section plus the residents of the community.
Right. So for for the entire development, there's thirty-seven total garage spaces, forty-nine driveway spaces. And we're creating a total of forty-five on-street parking spaces. For a total of one hundred and thirty-one spaces for these thirty-seven units. That three and a half space per unit ratio greatly exceeds the two-point-four space. Per unit ratio for RSIS. And individually, block by block, blocks one thirteen, one nineteen, and one thirty-two. All comply with the RSIS requirements. But for block one twenty-two specifically, only two-point-two-five spaces per unit. Are provided compared to the two-point-four spaces required by RSIS. And again, that's strictly limited to available on-street parking. Along Fuller Street and the fact that this is only a hundred-foot wide parcel with the individual driveways. It's just not feasible to get it directly in front of the property. But again, as as a total development, it's compliant. Three of the individual blocks are compliant and in a full build-out scenario, there would be more available on-street parking. But if the board deems it necessary, that we would respectfully request a de minimis exception from RSIS for block one twenty-two.
Thank you. Item number three deals with the roof line and we'll reserve that for the architect. Mr. Healy had a question with respect to the signage based on your testimony. We are making some minor modifications to the sign locations and all the signs will be fully compliant.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Item number five of his report again deals with architecture. Item number six, he references fencing that needs to be relocated out of the right of way. Has that been done on the plans or will it be done on our compliance package?
Yeah, yes, it has been updated on the plans and yes, it will be included in the compliance package.
Thank you. Item number seven talks about a third floor. I'll deal with that later. Next comment deals with the open space on block one thirteen and as to whether any street furniture will be provided.
Yes, again, there will be two small areas for benches out there. Again, we want to be respectful of the tenants of this building and not creating a large gathering space right in their front doors. But we think some benches in this landscaped area is a nice spot to. To sit and relax, enjoy a book outside and enjoy the the open space.
Thank you. Item number ten, we showed the board the potential build out, so that's been covered. Item number eleven, Mr. Healy, we can agree to provide all of that information to you and make that a condition of the approval. I assume that's acceptable?
Correct. Yes, that would be acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. The CME report, you've reviewed that and can you comply with all of the comments contained therein?
Yes, we can.
Okay, and again, we, oh, I skipped over before the fire prevention report dated August fifth, two thousand twenty-one. We can comply with that?
Correct.
And the environmental commission talked about pervious pavement. Where it was needed for stormwater management, we did provide pervious pavement, did we not?
Correct.
Okay, and are are we providing any? Any electrical components for charging stations in these units?
Since since each of these units are specific driveway and garage spaces, I believe they'll have the ability to. To install the electric charging infrastructure on the inside, inside the garages in the event they're needed.
Okay, thank you. As I said, the health department had no problems. The police department wanted some. Signs relocated and some landscaping removed. That's been taken care of or will be taken care of?
Correct.
Thank you. I have no further comments or questions from this witness. I will move on to the architect. And then Mr. Shelley can return the screen back and.
Who's us?
Good evening.
The testimony you're going to provide is the truth, all truth, or nothing but truth?
I do.
You can state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
Sure. Joaquin Bozes, B O U Z A S. One, six thirty-two. Pomp and Nav, Cedar Grove, New Jersey, zero seven zero zero nine.
Joaquin, you're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
I am.
And you're employed by Engle's Architecture?
I am.
And you.
As long as he's an architect in the state and licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, prepared the plans.
Thank you. Joaquin, can you? Share with the board the elevations and floor plans for the units and. Essentially, most of the units are the same except for the four-unit project that is, has the front-loaded garages, but we'll, we'll, we'll deal with that one separately.
Yes, yeah. So as as Mr. Shelley indicated, we have. About eight-unit clusters scattered throughout a variety of sites. And the number of units range from two units to eight units per cluster. There's essentially two designs. Two designs with garage entrances at the rear and then two design with entrances at the front. But essentially, the living space of both of all the designs are essentially the same.
And are the units two bedrooms, three bedrooms?
They are three bedrooms.
Okay. And. There is also in the units a additional open space on the third level, is that correct?
Yes, we have it called out as recreation space on the top floor of. Of the family unit. This space is intended for working from home. We provided no door at the top of the, at the stairs. And so you can, you know, through the hallway, you come up to the top and it's open for the entire, you know, family to use. And off of that recreation space, we have an outdoor deck.
Okay, and. The reason I brought this up, Mr. Healy in his report, item number seven raises a concern that the room could be used as a bedroom. This room has no door to it, is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, it's open to the stairwell.
And there are no closets in that room?
We have a what's noted as a storage closet. You know, for decorations and, you know, everybody could always use some storage, but it's not as, it's not as intended as a, like a bedroom closet per se. There's no shelving or anything proposed in it.
And for the record, I've discussed this issue with the applicant and and the concern that the Mr. Healy raises. Is the potential of it being used as a bedroom, even though it is not the intent. And and that would create an issue with respect to the parking. My client has indicated that in his leases with prospective tenants. He limits occupancy to two individuals per bedroom, such that there's a maximum occupancy in these units of six people. So therefore, the, that third level can't be used as a bedroom. And if it was, it would be in violation of the lease and the tenant would be subject to eviction. If the board wants some language in the resolution, to that effect, we would have no objection. That our leases would be limited to six individuals occupying each of the units. Joaquin, can you share with the board the elevations of the buildings and what they would look like? Colors and materials as requested by Mr. Healy and comment number five of his report?
Sure. So I'll just go to the A two hundred sheet. Just to show you the, the variety of the units when it comes to a. Six-unit cluster and a four-unit cluster, you can see that they've been designed in a way where there's a variety from. Townhouse to townhouse, and so it's not this repetitive rhythm along the facade. We have a design here. That shows the variety of materials that we're proposing. Standing seam metal roof over the entrances, brick at the ground level. Fiber cement shingles and clapboard siding. And also some vertical siding at the top gable, this decorative gable that we have, as well as a shed roof on the shared unit.
And this is diagram, and we should have this marked as a seven because this was not part of the original set. Assist in in explaining why we are slightly over on the height variance. For the forty feet?
Yeah, so it's really this peak right here. I'm not sure if everybody can see my mouse, but on this. You know, this architectural gable that we have at the end, this peak exceeds by seven inches. And that is really because of the slope of the roofs, which we have at a, at a pretty nice slope, eight on twelve. It is the only way that we can have a height, a ceiling height that's required by code within that space.
But the bulk of the roof is under the forty-feet zone requirement, correct?
It is, yes.
Okay. And can you flip to some of the other buildings and the architectural features of the other buildings, including the ones with the front-loaded garages?
Sure. This one. Has the, no, this is the rear, I'm sorry. One second. So on cluster I, we have the garage entrance at the front. Next to the main entrance into the unit, next to the stoop. And in the. Or plan. You could see the garage entrance adjacent to that front stoop.
And then there will be the living area on the first floor and the.
Yes, so we have a den or a bedroom three on that ground floor with a full bathroom. And then the main living space on the upper floor. So it's a large open space with a very nice-sized kitchen, a half bathroom, and then in a deck off of the kitchen as well.
Okay, and the colors and materials for these units will be essentially the same as those that we. Shared with the board a few minutes ago with respect to the other units?
Yes, so the this, this concept was to show the. The different tones that we can have on the fiber cement. We're obviously not going to be using all these colors, but. More than anything, this, this diagram or this exhibit was really just to show. That the, that the siding that we're using is really just as an accent color on, on the gables. And wherever there is some, some fiber cement siding.
Okay, and again, just for the record, the same color scheme, color patterns will be. On the four-unit building with the front-loaded garages, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I think I've hit all of the comments. From Mr. Healy's report. I have no further questions of this witness.
Thank you, Peter. Before we go to the board questions. Let me give Mark a minute because I mean, most of, most of Peter's time was spent on Mark's report and I just wanted to. Yeah, may preempt some other questions from the board as well. So Mark, if you want to like say anything about whether you feel everything has been satisfactory.
Yeah, no, actually, I was just thinking.
Really hard to hear you.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I wanted to say that through the exhibits and the testimony, I think the applicant's done a very good job of addressing all of my comments. So I don't have anything to ask at this point.
Okay, that makes it easy. So I'll open up to the board. Board has any questions to be answered?
Mike, I got a question for the engineer. So. You've, Kevin, you revised the, the plans to include some on-street parking. If you could pull up the the Gurley Street plan. Where you're widening that that section of roadway?
Sure. Mark, would you be able to give me? Ability to share again?
Sure, let me bring it up.
You should be good.
Right, all right, so. Here's the plan that shows the new reconstructed Gurley Street.
Okay, look, looking at your, your parking spaces, some of. Okay, look, looking at your, your parking spaces, some of those don't appear to comply with separations from stop sign distances or distances to the intersection.
Any of those would be coordinated fully to make sure that they are fully compliant.
Okay, just want to make sure just because we're you, you testified on a certain number and it doesn't appear that some of them are gonna have, are gonna be able to be where they are.
I understood, yeah. If we had, if we lost one, you know, we, the intention is to maximize the amount of on-street parking spaces along every perimeter street. And the fact that the, the remaining owners of the, the out parcel in block 113, we were kind of doing the on-street spaces around their driveway as well. But yeah, we would do as many fully compliant parking spaces as we cut on that street.
Okay, that's the only question I have. Thank you.
And just to clarify, if they do lose a few spaces, on-street spaces, they're still going to comply with RSIS, so it's not going to be a compliance issue.
Thanks, Mark, and thanks Carl. Any other questions from the board? I, I had a couple, but they were answered basically that these variances will be temporary, paid to build out. That was the biggest, biggest question I had. And both of the setback variances, both the setback variance and the previous coverage variance for that one parcel will be temporary. I think that was the biggest thing. I just want to clarify maybe one thing, Peter. When you said you would provide the infrastructure for the electrical charging units in the garages, does that mean you won't put a 220 volt outlet in there or are you going to have an infrastructure for a 220 volt outlet? I, I wasn't exactly clear.
Yeah, we, we are not going to provide the, the outlet unless there is a request for it by a tenant and that may be that in negotiating the rent, that'll be covered in the rent, but each of the garages will have the availability of having a 220 volt outlet for an electric vehicle, should it be needed. I think it would be foolish just to provide it in every unit where there may not be any need for it, but it would be available should it be needed by a tenant.
Yeah, I know, and I think that's consistent. What we've asked in other applications where they've been outside is that the infrastructure be there. In fact, this may be improvement because rather than just have one or two, like, you know, your warehouse application of one or two places or the infrastructure for for one or two or whatever, here you will have the ability to have a 220 volt charging in every garage if the tenant wants it. So in essence, in essence, it's, it's probably as good as it gets.
You're fading out there, Mike, your audio.
Oh, sorry. If it keeps that way, just let me know. Then I'll go plug my headset. Might be running out of charge. Any other questions from the board?
Yes, I have a number of questions.
Okay, go ahead, Ted.
Okay, the block 132 building. The plans that were submitted in early September showed parking in the back of the building and garages with access from the back of the building. And that's what you testified to tonight. But the latest plans that we received show that unit with garages with access from the front of the building directly from Davis Avenue and a parking space there. So which is it? Why did we get plans that don't accord with your testimony tonight?
I'm not exactly sure which plans you particularly received, but the application that we're presenting and testifying to is for rear parking and garages for the building on block 132, fronting on Davis Avenue.
And if, if that's what you're presenting, the northernmost parking space and garage there, which are right next to the ingress to the back. I think it, it will be impossible to turn into that headfirst. To use that space, it will be necessary. And that garage, I think it'll be necessary to back into it.
And that, if that's the, the scenario that the tenant has to use in the interim until there could be a future build out, then yes, that's what they would have to do is to pull in and back into that space.
Dr. Chase, if, if you recall, when we can acquire the rest of the lots, that driveway entering the site will disappear. It's on the exhibit. And maybe Mr. Shelley can show the unit that you're concerned about, which is right there, which will eventually have the access everybody else will have and be able to turn head in. So there may be a short period of time where they may have to back in or make some maneuvers to pull into the, that driveway. But hopefully, if we can acquire some of these other lots, that situation will be eliminated sooner rather than later.
That might be 20 years. You don't know. You have no way of knowing how long it will be before you can acquire all of the other lots.
Dr. Chase, that's absolutely true, but I could tell you that my client has been working diligently. And if we were able to acquire them before tonight, they'd be on the plan. So and, and we keep working diligently to acquire these lots. And we hope it's not going to be 20 years. It's be a lot less than 20 years.
But I can think of developments in the township where the applicant wanted to acquire another lot with a house on it and the inhabitant of that house and her family resisted and to this day have resisted having that acquired by the development, which in fact surrounds it on three sides. It can happen. But your plans, the plans submitted tend to show also a building on lots 20 to 22 of block 132. I would have thought you could have. Obviously, you had hoped to acquire that and weren't able to. I would have, that we would get plans that would show what you're really proposing at this time.
With relation to that parcel that's located at the corner of Franklin and Fuller, the applicant does own that parcel. The only way to construct a building on that parcel at this time would be front loaded garages and driveways onto Fuller Street.
Yeah.
Which creates a problem in a full build out scenario. So the original application that was submitted to the township a year ago did include three units on that parcel. We have removed those three units from here until we are able to, or the applicant's able to acquire more properties to create a, a more thought out development for a full build out.
So if I can, if I can speak to that briefly too. The, and I think Dr. Chase, you, with respect to that one unit, I, I think the, the issue that you brought up is valid. But I think the plan that's before you on the screen right now kind of speaks to the, the benefit of the overall build out and why staff basically work with the applicant to come up with a better long-term build out of this block. The original plan, as, as testified, had front loaded units on this block, which would have, frankly, if under the build out scenario, would have completely eliminated all of the on-street public spaces. That's not only good for the neighborhood as a whole, but it would have been inconsistent with the, with the redevelopment plan. So this plan, under this build out, has more than adequate parking onsite and also maximizes, you can see all the parking that would be provided on Davis for this development and the public in the long term. So I would say in the short term, again, I think your, your comment is undisputed. It certainly is an issue with respect to that one unit. But I think overall, the, the overall benefit to the plan in the area, I think certainly outweighs that, that, that issue.
I just hope it happens sooner. I'm sure you hope it happens.
I think we all do. I'm sure the applicant in particular hopes that happens sooner than later.
I also wanted to ask about the wetlands and the associated buffer. I think it's block 119. You just sort of seem to have written that off. Is there going to be access to it from your development or you've got, I think you show a big fence between it and your development?
Correct. So there's no access. As part of the DEP approval, we obtained a letter of interpretation to delineate the wetlands. And we received a transition area waiver to adjust the geometry of the buffer to allow for this development. And along the approved transition area buffer will be a delineated fence so that everything back behind the fence stays as preserved open space in compliance with the DEP requirements. They allow for the planting of native species to be within that transition area. So as you can see on the plan, we do have proposed landscaping in that buffer area. And the DEP has reviewed that and approved the the plantings of native species in there so that it's not just a, a tall grass lawn area, but it does create some visual appeal from Blair Avenue as well.
I'd suggest also having a fence along Blair Avenue. Because otherwise, it's just going to collect litter. And, and I hope that you will have plantings over as much of the buffer area as possible. I'm not I wasn't quite sure from this rendition that what you show in green includes the buffer area, but.
Yeah, so this is all the buffer area. Anything back behind here, that is all the wetlands that we can't touch. That is the actual wetlands that will remain undisturbed.
Okay, but I, I do suggest having a fence along Blair Avenue.
And part, part of the, the improvements is the installation of curb and sidewalk along Blair. Right now, there's none. And you do have all the runoff from Blair Avenue and Fuller Street flows right into these wetlands into a drainage ditch and then out into the system. So we will be providing the curbs, catch basins, inlets to keep the trash and any runoff from the roads from, you know, damaging these wetlands as well.
Well, will, will runoff still get into the wetlands? Otherwise, they'll cease to be wetlands.
The runoff will still make its way through the areas that are not part of our frontage without curbing.
Okay, I think that's all the questions that I had. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks Ted. And I think, you know, that highlights kind of what we're dealing with here is that, you know, we we sort of have to envision a full build out while dealing with conditions that are not a full build out. And I agree with Ted that you know, it's always hopeful, but you know, hope is never a strategy, so. Yeah, I mean, I, I think you know, we should make things is, I mean, I, I would not particularly want to rent a space where I had to pull in and back and back and back in the space. I suppose that's a buyer beware type of thing, right? That would be revealed and that would be, you know, deal with that or not. It is just one unit, so it's probably not, not terrible. But if it went much beyond that, I think I'd push back a little harder. But, you know, I, I think there's a theme here that, you know, the board has, you know, obviously support you know, for, for the full build out. And there's, there's conditions that you can mitigate, obviously, with a full build out that you can't with a partial build out. And that's kind of what we have to live with now. But let's, let's, let's minimize that in as much as possible, which I, I think we've tried to do. You know, within at least what's, what's practical. I mean, you can't build detention bases or, or take out things on property you don't get on. So I, I'm not sure how we would ask the applicant to render that better than what they have. At any rate, any other questions from the board?
Oh, if I could just go back to the question of the two, 220 volt outlets in the garages, I think what the environmental commission wanted to see is enough of a 220 volt line accessibility to a 220 volt line so that it would be easy for a an eventual tenant to install what is necessary for a charging system, which probably is a dedicated line that goes out to a car, even a car in the driveway. Just to make it easier to do that without necessarily having, without having to have an actual plug or charging system now.
Right, and I, I think that's what they testified they would do.
You know, comparable to having extra wiring in a parking lot of a warehouse so that at a later date more charging stations could be installed if needed.
Yeah, that's a good point. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, a few things, just to remind the public again, when we opened to the public to do the raised hand function, if you wish to make comments or ask questions. I just wanted to clarify one thing or explain one thing. Mr. Shelley had indicated early on in his testimony that the on-street spaces that would have been recently added would require some type of public funding. What, what he's talking about there is the Township Council has authorized the use of our Affordable Housing Trust Fund to fund the the additional spaces that are above and beyond what were on the original plan. So without those spaces, that site plan would have technically complied with RSIS. But it was felt by the township that the additional spaces on that main block would better serve the community, better serve that area in terms of parking supply. There are affordable housing developments all around it. Would also improve the streetscape and service traffic calming. So for all those, you know, public benefit reasons, the township is, council has agreed to fund the infrastructure improvements necessary to add those additional on-street parking spaces. With respect to the lease issue, they had indicated that they would agree to, or that they do stipulate that it's two people per bedroom, six max. I would recommend that that be specifically mentioned as a resolution condition. I'd also recommend that the use of that den be specifically limited for use for sleeping quarters in the lease and that the resolutions state that.
Yeah, I agree. That was actually, Mark, actually, now that you're on that, just letting let me say one thing. I, I totally agree because I, I was a little, little worried. I mean, people can do a lot of things. It's sort of a door. Actually, you know, close it off in a storage closet intended to be used for decorations. Well, it can be used for anything. So I, I feel much more comfortable about having that. And yeah, we'll put that as a condition of approval.
And then the last thing, and this is not necessarily my style to, to thank an applicant. I think Mr. Lant would probably, would probably say I'm I'm a more beat up applicant, but I think, I think in this case, the applicant has basically taken their time to, and has delayed their own application as a result of requests by staff. They're, they're holding off on one property that they already own for the benefit of the long-term build out. So I think that should be acknowledged. They've added a number of improvements, including the open space, connecting sidewalks throughout their development, connecting phases of this phase of this, you know, the phases in this particular application to to the blocks outside. They've basically complied with, with every request that the township staff has made. So I think they should be commended. I thank, I thank them for their cooperation all along.
Thanks, Mark.
And I don't say that much.
I can testify.
I agree.
Okay, great. If there's, if there's no other board comment, I'd like to make a motion to open to the public at this time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, so Mr. Chairman, I'm not seeing anybody. We don't have any call in people. Everybody. Yeah, so Mr. Chairman, I'm not seeing anybody, we don't have any call in people, everybody, all the public's on WebEx and I don't see anybody raising their hand.
Let's see, five people, one of them being Jennifer.
One, the extra PC is Christine.
And the extra PC is Christine. Okay, so I don't wanna I want to give it just a a minute of respectful silence in case anybody's reaching or finding a chat button or participants button or raising their hand, anything like that. All right, I don't see anybody. So we'll, I'll make a motion to close to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Peter, any last words?
Very briefly, with respect to the variances, the the peak of the roof for six inches is the minimus, and I think that was explained very well as an aesthetic benefit, and I I think that variance is justified. We have eliminated many of the variances that we started with in this project. Some of the variances that we are seeking now are temporary in nature and will be eliminated with the full build out and other variances such as the side yard setbacks. Again, we're not in our original plans, but were created as a result of the street widening. I I think Mr. Healy was correct, this has been a challenge. Obviously, the municipality is is invested in the redevelopment of this area and wants the applicant to move as quickly as he could possibly to to redevelop and, you know, in the perfect world, we would own all of those parcels and would have come in with a plan for the full development. That was not able to occur. I think trying to do this piecemeal was challenging, but I think also getting this done and getting it approved is showing that action is taking place and redevelopment is taking place in this section of the municipality. And hopefully, when all of this new construction starts, maybe it will encourage some of the people who are still there to decide that maybe it's time for them to move on or maybe for them to decide that they would like to live in one of these nice new units rather than the units that they're in now and sell and that will be back to you shortly for further development. And again, we're not going to wait to acquire all of the parcels whenever we're in a position to put a section in. We will be back to put that section in so that the redevelopment can continue. So I would respectfully request that the preliminary and final site plan be granted and that the variances be granted. All of them, I think, are C2 variances and and were justified by the testimony of Mr. Shelley and the architect. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. So I'll I'll entertain a motion from anybody who wishes to make it.
I will move approval with conditions specifying the variances and the conditions concerning the third floor recreation room.
I'll second.
Anything else I can remember?
Not thought in my head, but will capture it in the resolution.
I think that covers the big stuff, I'm sure, I'm sure Pete will round that out. And we have a second from Jennifer, so.
It's Mahir.
Oh, Mahir.
Mahir.
Yeah, you did.
All right. So Christine, you can pull the board.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Coral Houck?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Carol Schmidt?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Mustafa Mansray?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Sammy Shavon?
Yes.
And Chairman Arseni?
Yes.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Mark, Christine, you have anything else or you can adjourn?
Nope.
Nope.
All right, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right.
All in favor? Aye. Have a good one, stay safe.